Good evening everyone and welcome to Bexhill-on-Che town council four council meeting tonight Wednesday the 30th of August of July, the time is 6:30. As always lovely to see members of the public here. Before we start I always ask if you can either turn your mobile phones off or into airplane mode because it does affect the transmission, that would be really helpful. Thank you very much. I will move swiftly on to item one which is the public participation. This is your opportunity to take three minutes to speak to us so I ask who would like to raise their hand, one, two, I'll start, three, I'll start from my right hand. So Adam if you'd like to come to the microphone here, introduce yourself and you have three minutes to talk to us, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much Jay, good evening. My name is David Isaac, I'm a resident of Normans Bay and Malduke's who's the co-chair of the residents association is unavailable at the moment so she asked me to come along and say if you would. Very conscious I've only got three minutes so I'm going to run through the three points that I'd like to make. The first relates to the Bexhill town council sign in Normans Bay, I know this is an agenda item, I think agenda item 19, it's great you've got it up for discussion. I really wanted to start with thank you to councillor Jacqueline and councillor Winter for her engagement on this issue. It's been quite a lot of upset and certain sense of feeling about the sign. We've done a bit of canvassing of opinion, not scientific at all but really negative was all the responses that we got. And we've sort of been reflecting on what the purpose of the sign is and would encourage the council, I guess, to do that too. Most of us do actually appreciate that Normans Bay falls within the local area of Minister of the Bexhill town council. And if the council's intention is to mark their boundary with signage then it would perhaps be even more accurate, accurately positioned at the boundary point on Sullis Lane as the part of coast road that passes through Normans Bay is essentially a minor access road. And as we know an interesting mix of unadopted private and single lane roads. If the intention is to signal the approach to Bexhill to visitors it would be perhaps more helpful to position on Sullis Lane east of the coast road and to turning towards Normans Bay, so beyond that term really as a kind of tada here you are approaching Bexhill. As you know it's currently in the middle of the village position towards the east end and in effect welcomes residents and caravan park visitors to a graffiti covered building which is currently as you know a reinstated public convenience as I understand it, it's due to become an office space perhaps later in the year. So the request from the residents association is please take down the sign from its current position as soon as possible. If a sign is needed can a new location ideally on that position in Sullis Lane I mentioned be considered? And please can we have more dialogue if anything like this is planned in the future? That was point one. Point two and three are much shorter. Normans Bay annual festival Love Fest is on the 16th of August, thank you to councillor Winter for helping with the funding application and this is councillor Slaggett who I know is rather than this council, he's providing Bexhill council apparently. We'd be delighted to welcome all to Normans Bay if you'd like to join us for our festival. And finally just a reference back to the graffiti on the loo, it would be great to do something about it. People in the village would be really happy to volunteer, have a go if the right materials could be provided but we appreciate this may be a specialist job. So the ask on that one is please can the council look into this and consider what might be possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next round from my right I think is, if you'd like to come to the microphone and introduce yourself to us please.
Hello everyone, my name is Tracy Love and I'm speaking as a resident of Bexhill. I've got two points which I would like to raise, I don't expect you to be able to answer them this evening but I would like you to be looked for consideration. The first one is does the town council have a strategy for retaining assets as part of devolution? If you do have a strategy for it, what is it and how can it be progressed and how can the tenants of the town help you achieve that? I'm aware of a general philosophy of it, if it makes a profit it goes up and if it doesn't it comes down. I'm not entirely sure that's in the town's best interests so I would just like to raise that point. The second point I'd like to make is again a question about the progress of the town plan. I'm aware that Rother District Council may or may not have had a town plan, I'm not sure it was ever actually released properly, I don't think it's actually ever been launched properly, likely to still be in consultation but it's to my understanding that the responsibility of that was part to the town council when the town council came into existence. My particular area of concern is protection of our green spaces. We seem to be losing green spaces left, right and centre. I'm a dog walker and trying to find somewhere just to exercise your dog in Bexhill is becoming more and more limited. In my opinion that town plan should do more to protect our green spaces so please can you consider those points and take them forward.
Okay, thank you. Round the third, if you could go to the microphone and introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my address for the president, Bexhill. Bexhill website, lack of updates, on the meeting dates 25-26, nothing's been added since May 25. Minimum documents, full count and nothing added since the 21st of May 25. Very little seems to have been added to the website so the public can easily be kept up to date. Public conveniences, BTC is now responsible for it, keeping these open in from 7 till 7, does this mean they are clean daily? I've recently been inside two of these over the last four weeks, West Parade and Channel View. Channel View's got graffiti all over the place plus dampite, why the door is broken and leaking. I consider that both things are disgusting, extremely smelly. How much does BTC pay in adequate service? Are these conveniences ever checked? What's the progress of the Channel View freehold from RDC? And just a point, on BTC note, RDC, this Devonshire Square public convenience is a freehold of the list of assets in July 25. I understand it though it never had this freehold, it was an informal agreement with Network Rail. The roundabout, 259, as a vested interest party in this project, submissions closed on the 30th of June, only were submitted. What happened to the information for the evaluation and shortlist which ended today, 30th of July? National highways being kept informed, what is happening in the vision of the sculpture? Under this seven, under item seven on this tonight, the audit committee, it has been suggested the council recruit up to two part-time workers. Because of the forthcoming changes i.e. devolution, wouldn't it be more prudent and cost effective to employ a fully qualified town clerk with experience on a part-time basis? I don't understand, the operations manager needs an additional vehicle to look after three town ratings, as I understand it they will require a big vehicle. Where are these vehicles going to be kept where not in use? Will the manager be using this private? Are parking permits needed? Will the mileage be recorded, time and distances? That's it, thank you.
Perfect timing because that is the three minutes, you've been practising. A couple of other residents that came in, would you like the opportunity to speak?
No, we just came along.
Okay, that's fine. Again if you could introduce yourself, a minute.
Hello everybody, my name is Linda Plough, I'm later living with Parkinson's disease. I'm a volunteer for Parkinson's UK, a campaigns volunteer and I belong to the working age local Parkinson's group. And we've been doing a lot of petitioning for the government debate, for Parkinson's to be debated in government. And I want to say thank you to Bexhill-on-C because you are the most caring town in the whole of the UK with the highest number, 500, that voted for this to go through. And in return for this privilege, Paul Mayhew Archer is coming to do a charity show for us all at the Hastings Centre. I asked at the local council offices if it could go on digitally to be advertised but as it was in Hastings it wasn't allowed to be. But since then we appealed and I wanted to say thank you so much that you've given Bexhill the opportunity to also see this show as it's now on your digital website. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Had to take a breath after that to get positives, thank you very much. So I move on to item two which is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies for absence tonight please?
Yes, we do. We've got councillor Lee who is on holiday, councillor L is unwell, councillor Ruston is travelling back from Swanage and might not make it and councillor Jason has had a medical procedure.
Okay, thank you. Is that the wish of this council to accept those apologies for absence? A proposal and a second of those please. Propose councillor Hunt, second of councillor Byrne, thank you. All those in favour please show. Carried unanimously, I will move on to the seeing declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests. Do we have any of those? Councillor Winter.
Member of Rother District Council, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Byrne.
Member of Rother District Council.
Councillor Timpey.
Member of Rother District Council, thank you.
Thank you very much. I move on to chair's announcement. I was going to say a little bit but I'm not going to say, well I am going to say a little bit. This is a very long agenda and I would ask all councillors are very succinct in when they speak and to be mindful that we have an awful lot to get through tonight. That's not avoiding anybody wishing to say something but please be aware that we have a lot of business to get to and some confidential business at the end of it so I ask you to support me in making this meeting go as smoothly as possible. Item five, minutes to approve the minutes of the following two meetings, appendix A and B which is Wednesday the 25th of June and the EGM on the Wednesday the 2nd of July. Need a proposer, I'm going to put those two as one package, do I have a proposer and a second, proposed councillor Plim, second councillor Blagrove. All those in favour please show. Carried unanimously, there is now a silence where I have to initial an silent minutes. Slight amendment, we don't have the minutes of the 2nd July here to be signed so if it's okay I'll defer those and sign those in September. If anyone has any objections to that please raise their hand now. Okay, thank you. I shall move on.
Sorry, we actually did have them, sorry.
Excellent, that's one thing that I don't have to do in September. Item six, committees to nominate members to the town accessibility working group, feeding back to the amenities committee. I resigned from that committee due to workload, we currently have two councillors on there and we really need to progress this. So again it's a call to action from councils who may wish to get involved. We have one council who's not here tonight who I'm aware would like to be involved but would need to be proposed and nominated which is councillor Lee. Is there anybody else wishing to express an interest to join this? I would prefer if there were more than three because three is a very small amount for a committee. Councillor Blagrove, are you putting your name forward or wishing to speak? Putting your name forward to join the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a seconder? Councillor Crotty, all those in favour of councillor Blagrove joining? That's carried. I would like to propose councillor Lee because I've been made aware that he would like to join. Do I have a seconder for councillor Lee? I'm going to go councillor Gox, all those in favour of councillor Lee joining? That's carried unanimously. I really wish that committee all the success in moving things forward because I think it's something that the council should be involved in and now having four members of that committee, I'll leave you to do what you think is appropriate. Thank you very much. Item seven, recommendations from committee, appendix C which is, it's a recommendation from the amenities committee for the lease for the public convenience toilet in Devonshire Square with Network Rail. We have via that committee asked a number of questions and we are in open dialogue with Network Rail but it's really just to seek permission of this for council because leases have to be agreed by full council before we progress it any further. So they've been raised, we're yet to have the answers but subject to the answers being acceptable, we're keen to progress this lease because it has been on the statute books for some time. It's a recommendation from amenities, the chair of amenities isn't here today, who's deputy chair of amenities?
Might be me? It's me.
Okay, councillor Byrne, do you have anything else to add?
No, no, I think as you've said, subject to the questions, subject to getting questions, satisfactory answers to the questions you've asked which appears to be in the pipeline, no objections at all.
Okay, so I need a proposer and a seconder to move this forward. Councillor Thomas, are you proposing or asking a question?
I'm proposing.
Proposing it. Seconder, councillor Crotty, all those in favour of moving this forward, please show. Any against? Abstentions? That's carried. Recommendation from finance and audit committee which is appendix D, it's for a vacancy, there is a job description, it is what it is, it is without doubt, we are still resource short and our parkers created this position as an essential support mechanism for this town council. So it's here, it's a recommendation from finance and audit. Chair of finance, would you like to add anything to that?
It was all discussed at the meeting.
Okay, you're taking the, you're moving this motion, you're proposing it.
Yeah, I'll propose.
You've got a seconder? Councillor Plin, any questions before we vote? Show of hands please, all those in favour please show. Any against? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on from to item nine, reports from councillors and this is for three minutes and for, we have our divisional county councillor here, councillor Hollage, lovely to see you. The floor is yours, we've got three minutes.
Thank you. Would just like to say thank you to everybody in the town council for the good work that you've done with the toilets, they're absolutely fantastic so congratulations there. You've done a good job well. And what I'd just like to remind everybody is that there is currently an informal parking consultation out which closes on the 8th of August. The key thing about it is that there will be a new zone F which will be over to the west of Bexhill in the Richmond areas. And so far surprisingly I haven't had any detrimental comments on my desk. There's one that I've got to change but there is time to change and that's where I would like everybody to at least if you have any issues please send them to me. The other thing is-
Could I encourage you to speak into the microphone a little bit please, it helps the recording, thank you.
The other thing that's happening is national highways are going to be closing the King Off Way on the 5th of September Friday over the weekend to the Monday the 8th of September. During that weekend we've got the Wild West going on in Bexhill so it's going to be a very busy day. My fear is that most of those diversions will go through the town centre or just try to find the local roads best they can. Negotiated with the national highways to put in a new, a better diversion which will be up through Mount Street View and that way. I'll leave these with you here and if anybody's got anything please liaise with the national highways regarding the Ravenside roundabout and other national highways issue, I'll be meeting with them this Friday to discuss this and other issues and I'll bring up the Ravenside roundabout at the time. Just like to go through local government review and devolution. I've got myself on this committee which I'm chairing, scrutiny, a reference group at East Sussex County Council where there are 15 cross-party members, I'm chairing it and we're looking at every aspect of it, there's a whole file there of what's going on and I've got other folders as well. A lot of the issues that you're discussing about we're discussing at East Sussex, there are seven of us involved in it, Brighton and Hove, all the five district boroughs as well as East Sussex. The consultation that we had and the government had, we had a 1% response, 550 population of East Sussex, we had 560,000 responses, about 1%, which is expected. However what-
About 560,000 responses.
5,000, yeah.
Stick with the 1%.
Yeah, 1%.
Just because you can count.
What the two factors were, they wanted local representation and they wanted to access local services. When you look at this change that's going on, currently we have one MP, we have one, each resident in Bexhill or in Bexhill has one MP, one East Sussex County councillor, two Rother councillors and two town councillors. So everybody has six elected officials. With the new model you'll have a strategic mayor which is elected, you'll have an MP which is elected, you'll have two, this is the governance thing that's going through where we increase the divisions from 50 to 100, you'll have two East Sussex County councils and you are in such a lucky place because you're not going through any changes at all. You exist, what you would do you can only look forward. We've got to reanalyse amongst the district boroughs how we merge into one unitary authority. But every member of the public will still have six elected officials that they can call their own. So this is the message I'm trying to send out through communications that you've still got local representation. How the locals will actually get their area committees or new town councils for Hastings and Eastbourne is another issue. I think that's it really. Bexhill Day is August the 16th, thank you very much for organising that, please try and get everybody there because we're going to be there. Any questions?
Just one question, so thank you for that. Regarding the new parking study.
Yes.
You've said you received no negative.
Absolutely, until now.
I fail to believe you've received no negative about the new updated parking on the seafront regarding times and allocation.
Well I haven't.
You haven't?
I have not, not from anybody-
That's fair.
I can answer it if somebody has got a comment or a reason why-
I think the town's struggling and I think people need to start having a look at what's going on in the town.
Totally agree with you. And part of what I will be putting into and have put in consistently at these meetings over for over the last two years is that there needs to be an amalgamation of the parking places legislation off-street car parks of Rother. How come every Rother councillor gets a permit to park in their space, I never know but that should be, anyway that's another issue. I don't, I don't get a permit, they get it free, they can just park off-street without a problem. But that's another issue. They extended the hours, they increased the parking charges, in Rother district council we cost £600 a year for an annual permit. On-street average £60 only, a tenth of the cost. That's the issue, that's the issue.
You had no negative response so that's something we need to put out to the public to respond to.
We did have a need to respond for the simple fact that the residents in all the roads, when they come home from work or when they come home from shopping or when visitors come, they need to access their property. So the residents have said, we can't find, we pay for a permit, we can't park outside our house, can you change the hours? So residents have asked us to do something, we've put forward a proposal and that proposal will go forward for consultation now, a formal consultation and then it will go for traffic regulations. So it's about working together and trying to please everybody.
Also as well, excuse me, the concept of extending the devil car park till 10 o'clock at night.
11.
11, but permit holders finish at 8, so the people that will park-
Well at the moment, like at 6 o'clock at the moment.
Exactly, so there's got to be more forward thinking going forward because we wasted a lot of time for that to come to logic.
Please put in your proposal of what you would suggest and it will be considered, I will look at it along with officers.
Thank you.
Okay, can I just, thank you very much councillor Hollage, very supportive as always. Can I just again reiterate, there are some phones in the room that are still on, it's affecting the recordings, please can I ask again airplane mobile off please, thank you. Okay. Oh yes, I'll come back to that. I've missed item eight so I'll come back to that. 9B, we don't have any district councillors here. 9C, any ward councillors for town? Anyone wish to say something? Councillor Crotty?
Thank you Chair, yes, just basically there's a lot of issues going around town with children stealing and stuff like that but there is actually Sussex Police are doing something about it. It's called the summer safer hotspots which is means that the police would be going around and there's quite a few police officers around Bexhill town centre today. No PCSO, just proper policemen and policewomen that are going around doing their duty which is great to see, there's about seven or eight I saw today. I had a nice chat with the PC Kemp and it looks like it's a good thing going on and if it's, if it makes a good result for the town in Bexhill that would be something that the funding could happen as well. So it's doing a good job and a lot of praise for them for actually seeing quite a lot of police, new faces as well and no PCSOs. So it was very good to see that today and it's very good that they're doing this strategy. They have done this strategy before last year as well, the summertime to help kids from being bored so they can be around. So I believe that was quite a good time in the town and also the Bexhill town carnival was very good, a lot of people were hanging around waiting for them to come around parade. That was a good event as well for a Saturday, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Jacqueline?
You may have seen that Sir Keir Starmer stayed at the Cootenbeach Hotel the week before last, he attended a wedding, it was noted that his security details parked on double Y's. I had a meeting with David Dennis from Bexhill Nature with the Environment Agency to discuss encouraging fidgetive shingle and if that progresses further I could report back but maybe that's an appropriate committee thing. We've had some reports from North High residents about security being over enthusiastic, I will take that up as a home office file on a form and I gave a presentation about my work as a town councillor in Brighton, I said that our toilets were open and that got a cheer there too.
Maybe Bexhill is doing better than what some people think we're doing. Anyone else wish to say anything? Councillor Thomas?
Yeah, well I'd just like to let all the councillors know that the 1066 country walk is now fully open apart from a slight problem with the brand taken away, it is, but it's open, yeah.
Okay, maybe that could help dog walkers. Okay, anyone else? The councillors?
Sorry, I've got one more thing, on the 30th of August the Bexhill Fire Brigade are having an open day from 10 o'clock at quarter past 9-
Is that in Central Ward?
Central Ward, yeah.
Okay.
And then at 9:15 for 45 minutes there's going to be a, they're opening up for children or anyone with autistic needs or anyone who's succumbed with any kind of noise things where they're going to have a quiet time for 45 minutes for children to attend as well.
Okay, thank you. I shall move back to item eight now which is the mayor's report which I've distributed to councillors today but I've decided in future I should be reading it out so residents can hear what the mayor and deputy mayor have been up to. So another busy month with lots of meetings including a couple of trips out of town. This is something that I'm keen to do more of during my second term of office, it enabled me to talk with many other people about what is happening to our town and to find out other ideas for the going on in our surrounding towns. Having attended the Bexhill Academy award ceremony, it was right that I went to the Vigilance Park Future Leaders Award in St Leonard's. It was very challenging and to turn up and be expected to do the presentations and make a speech when I didn't know I was doing it in front of 150 people was a challenge but I succeeded I believe. The deputy mayor of Hastings was less fortunate because he had the wrong glasses which was, but we got through it between- The deputy mayor of Hastings was less fortunate because he had the wrong glasses, which was, but we got through it between us. I also attended the Sydney Cricket Club Annual Club Day, along with so many other town, district and county councillors that were there too. The club is really progressing nicely. Those who haven't been to have a look in St Mary's Rain, I'd recommend popping along. They got promoted last year, they're top of the league this year and they've got a lovely atmosphere in the backdrop there with the trees. It's a beautiful place to take a picnic and just have a nice casual afternoon. And they always advertise their games on social media, so have a look. And of course, to be a part of the Beckhill Carnival, which was last Saturday, as we mentioned. I'm still unsure quite how I got into the brilliant hot rod, but I managed it. There were no doors and I had to manoeuvre myself. That was provided by Beckhill One Hundred and it was loud and fast and quite an experience. It was brilliant seeing so many town councillors when I was being driven around out and about on the route cheering on the procession. Including so many children that walked the route and that was pretty impressive to me, the youngsters getting involved in something that's going on in our town. The very small committee for the carnival, I think they did a great job. It's not an easy thing to put on an event where you have somewhere around five thousand people turning up at the polegrove for one event. It's disappointing that people moan about it, but don't step forward to help. And then I hear people say, there's nothing going on in Beckhill. I see, there is, you have to look for it and join in. I finished with Operation Overgrowth when myself and a deputy mayor were invited to cut back a hedge on Hastings Road. We were joined by a ninety-year-old veteran who wanted to do his bit. He can now use a footpath on his mobility vehicle safely. And actually, when I drive up there, I feel quite a sense of pride. It's not in my ward, but the sense of pride of actually making part of our town, just look a little bit smarter. I'm quite proud of being involved in that. So that's my mayor's report for July of this year. So I now move on to item ten, which is planning matters, to receive an update on the neighbourhood plan. The four of us are on there, I'm not quite sure who's going to do an update, but shall I start a new chip in? So we have made some progress. It has stagnated, it's fair to say. But since we've last spoken about this, we've had two meetings, one with the four of us. And the second one, we engaged with Rother District Council, who were the support network to introduce neighbourhood plans, which I think we all felt was really helpful, enabled us to understand it. And we've come to the conclusion that this is a major piece of work that as a town council to bet, the four of us, we don't think have the time or the skill set to complete this activity. We've discussed a lot of things about what needs to go in there and some of the actions we could take. And I think really, it's probably scene setting that we may have to gain some help to be able to make this happen. I don't know if the other three want to add to that.
Apart from that I will prepare the notes tomorrow. I know you asked me two weekends ago, but I've been slightly preoccupied the last two weeks. But I will sort out the notes and circulate them tomorrow.
Thank you. I think also where we are, that we're going to have to as a town council, it is about protecting our town, that's what the neighbourhood plan does. But we've got to make it right. And I think if we half do it, it will be rejected. And we've seen some of the other plans, it went through, I think one went through nine different appeals before it was accepted. So just that in itself would take eighteen months from when you've actually created your plan to get it approved by what will then probably be the unitary authority. So it's a piece of work we need to think about. Councillor Jacklin?
Are there financial benefits to Beckhill having a town plan?
There is one consideration, which is you would gain more SIL money. There's an extra ten percent SIL money that we would get if we had a neighbourhood plan. There's other benefits, which is around protecting the history, the culture and anything else that this town council wants to put in it. But the downside is that we really have to replicate the planning side of what Rother have in their plan. We can't do anything any different to that. So we don't have the ability to say we don't want building in a certain area. We have to adhere to what is in. So we, I believe there's still a consultation out for the Rother plan. I recommend everybody going onto the internet and completing that process because it's really important. Rother plan is clear for us as a town. So we've all got to take personal responsibility for doing that type of thing. So I think that's where we are with the neighbourhood plan. Councillor Plin?
Just to add on that, we're looking at the SIL funding aspect from current structures. We can only go on current structures. We don't know what that will look like in a couple of years' time. And in a couple of years' time, our plan will come to be written. And so we've got to be very flexible in our approach to this and look above us and see what's moving and how the landscape's changing around us. And that's, most town councils that go through this process take about four years to complete their plan. And so as we're completing ours, things are changing around.
Councillor Byrne?
Just a point on that. Places like Eastbourne and Hastings are having to create parish stroke town councils because they haven't got any. And that's going to be a massive workload for them. It would not surprise me if the government don't go some way towards creating more of a template for these new people and some form of assistance. So I think we might well benefit. And we've certainly got to, I'm sure you will, keep your eyes open and ears open for any assistance that's coming down the track. But all over the country, there are going to be plans, which as you say, normally take four years, which are going to be expected to be ready within less than two. So I think it's largely, you know, probable that there will be some government assistance or some sort of template that makes the whole thing easier.
That's possible. Regrettably, government have, they did have some funding available to draw up a neighbourhood plan, which has been withdrawn. So I think what the four of us are doing is painting the picture that when we get to precept stage, we will be putting a request in for some money to get somebody to help us with this. So it's scene setting as much as anything. Shall I move on? The other three councillors? Everyone else moving on? We would normally have an item in here, but it's been admitted called planning applications that are called in for council. I'm aware of one, but it hasn't been declared to all of us as yet. So because of the timing, we may have to do an EGM unless it's, I don't know the detail. And I'm quite happy to add sort of two or three minutes for you councillors to talk about this and see whether we can support that now or to save calling an EGM.
Most councils should be, that were previous, on the previous administration, will probably recognise this address. In Collington Park Crescent, there's a block of land that in the nineteen seventies, when the development was built, was left for open space usage. Rother, over the years, used to maintain that block of land until they realised they didn't have to. And so then they didn't and they cut back. It's since become overgrown and is a bit of an eyesore. And the developers have jumped on the opportunity to put planning application for three houses in there. I think we should express an interest to say, as this town council, we should express an interest to maintain that plot of land back to open use, public use and put it on at the next agenda item when it comes to local government organisations actually seek through that process to get it under our portfolio.
Okay, I'm just trying to work out how-
Is the land owned by RBC?
It's come, it's come under a planning application at the moment, so-
Yeah, but-
It was refused last time and it was refused after our request for it to be refused. We backed up the residents that lived there as well and it's gone to an appeal, I believe.
But who owns it?
I believe the developers own it. I'm not too sure in the actual, but it was left for public use. They weren't allowed to build on it. But now, because Rother aren't maintaining it, they've jumped on that opportunity.
I think the answer is to move that discussion to item eleven. If you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. But what I am going to do is, for the benefit of, because I think it's the right thing to do, is move item eleven to a closed part of the meeting.
Can I just say something on that? Is, if you're saying that Rother don't own it and we can't actually bring it to eleven because we've got to put an expression of interest in it? It's not owned, it's not owned by-
It's not on the list, it's not on the list.
But also it's not owned by them.
I haven't got the clear indication of whether they own it or not, I haven't looked at it.
So I think there's confusion.
It's a planning issue at the moment. It's come up as planning. I think we should object to that planning issue and stand to how we were before. We object to planning on that plot of land.
Okay. Councillor Winter?
Just to say, I think going from what councillor Plin said, we should take our objections from last time, reuse them. And whether we do it now or in eleven, ask the clerk to investigate who owns that piece of land and then move from there. But now, object to the planning application on our previous objections.
Okay.
Because it's a planning issue, not a who owns it issue, that needs to come next.
Okay. Can we do that to just redo the previous objection?
You shouldn't.
Do we need an EGM to discuss it?
I have the question, have the EGM?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I've got to make a decision. I take your point. To make it legal, I think if we're going to object to it because it's not specifically on the agenda as an item, then I will have to call an EGM to do it.
Do we know when the deadline ends for comments? So we don't miss the deadline.
The comment and deadline isn't an issue because we have the agreement that we can extend it if we need to. And I can call an EGM tomorrow so it can be held as soon as possible.
Due to the vet chair, none of the planning applications are on the agenda. So if we want to look at any of the planning applications, we have to call an EGM on that basis.
No, because the process that was agreed is that if any town councillor has an issue to discuss anything that's on the list that is sent out weekly, they contact the clerk and it's called in and then it is on the agenda. But I believe because of the timing issue, because the list only came out Tuesday, the agenda had gone out, so it couldn't be on the agenda. So the only way to discuss it, bearing in mind there was no meetings in August, I'll have to call an EGM to discuss it. That's the only technical way to do it, otherwise the decision that we make tonight may not be legal. So, okay, we'll move on, but I will call an EGM to discuss that. Okay, item eleven, I've already said we're going to move that to- Sorry, councillor Jacklin?
I think it's a pity that we didn't get the chance to support what seems like a necessary protection of open spaces. But perhaps there's nothing we can do.
I think that will be down to the EGM to decide what approach we take. There's a couple of ideas already been needed tonight. Yes, thank you.
So because you guys, oh sorry, there's a fly. Because you abolished a planning committee, who obviously met twice a month, we're no longer in line with when the planning lists go out. So we agreed to use a call-in process where every week the clerk would send you the planning applications and if there was something you wanted to discuss, I would put them on the full council agenda. And if it didn't fall in line with that, we would call an EGM to discuss it. Unfortunately, this list came out yesterday, so I couldn't put it on the agenda as I put the agenda out on Wednesday. And so we have to call an EGM in line with our process. Because this item isn't on the agenda, legally we can't make a decision on it because we need to be transparent. So if an item isn't on the agenda, we cannot discuss or make a resolution on it. Obviously, members of the public may want to come to this meeting and speak on that or hear what's happening regarding that planning application. And if it's not on the agenda and we discuss it and make a resolution, it's not transparent. So we can't make a decision on it.
Councillor Byrne?
Let's not forget the Rother district, the ward, the Rother District Council ward member could call it in. And therefore, the town councillor, not acting as a town councillor but acting as a resident of his or her ward, can ask that their district councillor to call it in.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty certain that they wouldn't meet with any resistance at all. And that's really, that's the process that was designed to be fit for purpose. We've tried to bolt on a sort of call-in on that. So I think in this case, it would be better to just go straight for the existing, well tried, tested and true process of get your district councillor to call it in or ask your district councillor to call it in.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on. Sorry, councillor Plin?
Your decision to move on and oblikt item eleven, I wish to object to.
Okay. Could you explain why you're objecting to it, please?
Because it's high time the people in this town realise what's going on when it comes to devolution. We are fighting for the assets of this town and it's high time we make it open and public. To have this behind closed doors when there's no financial discussion taking place, I believe, is not being open and transparent. We are about to have a meeting in September when we're going to talk about devolution. We had a meeting in May when we, behind doors, put forward some proposals. We were then asked to go to Rother District Council to reiterate those proposals and we were coerced into sort of looking at them in a different way. They've come back to us in a different way, packaged up. And it's about time we spoke about it openly. We can't keep backing tracking and putting it behind us, behind closed doors.
Okay. Interested as to why you didn't say that when we first discussed this and we set a precedent. And I don't think the word coerced is appropriate, but I'm going to stick by my decision to move it to a closed, but I note your comments.
The reason I didn't disclose it at the start of it, because we're at the early days and we thought we were going to get a bit more of a friendly dialogue with Rother District Council over this. We can see what happens when things are done behind closed doors, as councillor Winter has found out with the Colonnade. And I do not want the same thing to happen to a vast amount of assets that this town has had for many, many years.
Stay focused on this agenda and not go off track.
I'm just pointing, there is one.
I've made the decision, so we'll move on, please.
Can you please note that I object to it and I would like a vote to see whether anybody else agrees with your decision?
You can have a vote councillor Plin, but the chair manages the agenda.
I quite agree with it.
So if you vote against me, I will still move it, so you can-
I quite understand that.
Okay.
Councillor Blaver?
Councillor Vagro?
I would just like to say I echo everything councillor Plin has just said about that and it's good that somebody will actually stand up and say that because it's sometimes not so easy, but well done for that. Thank you.
I also agree with councillor Plin and councillor Vagro.
Okay. Your comments are noted and as chair, I manage this agenda. As we know, the clerk is in charge of the agenda, but I manage this meeting, so.
For a switch.
All right, okay. I'm told I have to call a vote to note the objection, but it remains my decision. All those in favour of moving item eleven to the closed part of the meeting, please show your hands. All those against me moving it and leaving it in item eleven, show your hands.
Do we need a half-term shave?
Okay, I've made my decision. I will discuss this now. But I'm putting a very firm note and a reminder of behaviour. And if there is any comments made adverse apart from the process, then I will close the meeting. That is a risk you're taking. I will not permit any adverse remarks made in the inappropriate way that sometimes they are. If you're prepared to do that and behave under the code of conduct and known principles, then I will be prepared to discuss it now and change my decision. It shows that I'm listening to what fellow councillors are saying.
Yes, happy, happy to do so.
If you're all happy for that, then please raise your hand. If you're not happy with that, please raise your hand. Right, okay? Thanks very much, Chair. It's very disappointing because I've got all my papers in the right order and now I've got to move them all around. Okay.
So with all due respect, we all had our papers in this order.
It's always helpful to have a sense of humour. I do try hard with that. Okay, we're now on item eleven A, to note the categorised devolution list from Rother- To note the categorised devolution list from Rother District Council and to progress with the submission of expressions of interest. So you all have the list. There is one addition to be made to that list that I'm aware of, which is the public conveniences in Sydney. For those that were at the meeting that was kindly organised by Rother to support this process, we've had the documentation, we've had it before, and this time it's been split into various categories in column four. And they are community, historical, open spaces, parks, recreations and gardens, and sports. That is enabled for the benefit of residents. There is an expression of interest process that we have to follow, which needs to be submitted by the twenty-sixth of September. And it is for this council to decide what we want to express an interest in. And the sooner we do, the sooner Rother will be able to say yes or no. The details that we have in front of us are all, they're described as possible. So they're more likely that we will be able to have these devolved than other things that are potentially less likely to be devolved. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to move these forward, as opposed to just expressing an interest in every single item on this list. Because they are all possible for us to take. Okay, I'm going to start with deputy first, and I'll go around that way.
When we had our meeting with Rother, they put it all into categories for us, and they asked us if we could categorise which ones we'd like from one to six. So there's six categories there, and they've asked if we can say which one we think is the most important. And then the sixth one is the least, I know they're all important, but they've asked if the sixth one is the least important. So they can then decide what they want to start with. So number one will be the first one that they look at and try and get all the information over to us. And number six will be the one when they get, will be the last thing that they get back to us, logically. And that's what they said with the categories. I understand that that is correct.
That's my same.
So, and then all I'd like to say on it is, I think, this is from myself, I think we should say that we go for all the toilets, not just what's here. I believe we should also ask for the town hall. And there probably will be other bits, but we need to really, what we've been told again from Rother is we cannot go down a rabbit hole of asking for everything again. Yes, we can ask for everything on here. But if we start then picking out loads of other bits, then it's going to be really difficult for our officers and their officers to give us the information. So what they've sort of done is they've rounded it all up. They've said, go for all of this, just tell us ones to six, which one's the most important, which is the least important. And I'm guessing there's going to be councillors here that are going to want to add a couple of bits. As I've said, I think we should go for all the toilets. And the town hall. Other than that, I'm sure, as I said, there'll be other councillors that will want to add to that. But that's my opinion, and that's all I want to say on this.
Okay, the difficulty is, of course, that residents here tonight and those that might look can't have access to the list, so can't see what we're talking about. So we have to be mindful of that. Okay. councillor Plim. Sorry, councillor Plin, first.
Just to clarify, Buckers Place is a, is a no? Is it a mistake, or is it a second page, sixth one from the bottom?
Four.
Yes, it's a.
Four.
Four.
That's the one under the.
Is that a no?
It's a no.
That's a no.
It's a no.
That's a no, okay. I'd like to say quickly on this, like, this is really important for this list. I totally appreciate what councillor Elsaying. But this gives us a good opportunity to invest in this town on the recreational open space and the sports side of things, which we are losing more and more land every day in this town for less and less recreational use to building that. And I would put that very highly on the agenda. I mean, with six, six things, I think it shows us putting a bit of a stance on them the last two years, has become, this list has become a lot more fruitful. And also, like, to have the, like, just by getting the toilets that have just been renovated, shows you what we can do as a council, once we're given the opportunity to do it with our other people holding on behind us. I recognise what other councillors have done, but just that one toilet and that one thing, that gave us a freedom to show what can happen.
Okay. councillor Plim.
Yeah. Can I seek some clarification? Six items or six categories?
I believe they're six.
Because if we've got six items, they're full up on the public toilets, just including that.
Six categories.
Six categories.
Just to be clear, could you agree, right, we could say the community is our preferred first one to be processed? Okay, fair enough. Parks and gardens might be the sixth one, so it's a category.
But within those categories, there could be as many as possible. So if we wanted to go for all six, how many categories are there?
There are six categories.
We can go for all six categories.
We can, yeah. But we need to prioritise the order that we want the categories to be worked on.
Yeah. Now, what puzzles me is, we'd already made our, our interest in all these items. And that meeting we had only solved Rother's administration problem of categorising. And it's quite clear, toilets are toilets, they are not green spaces.
It didn't solve Rother's administration problem, because it was ourselves that had a conversation with Rother about the expressions of interest being a very complicated and difficult and time-consuming process. So that discussion enabled the town council and Rother District Council to find a better, more streamlined process, which is why we've done it in blocks rather than having to do the same process every single time. There's two hundred and ninety different assets in Bexhill. And you imagine our deputy clerk and IFO having to express an interest, potentially all two hundred and ninety. It would take, it would go past the twenty-sixth of September, so that's why this process was changed.
I can see the streamlining process that we've been presented with, which was a good, good move forward. However, it has muddied the waters and delayed things somewhat. And there was no need for that delay, to be honest with you. It's a clerical issue that went through, and that could have been easily solved. It didn't need another meeting and then for someone else to re-categorise everything.
So we are, we are where we are.
We are where we are, we are. We are where we are, I understand that. We're going to put up with this, and we're going to have to put up with a lot of this tactics coming in. There are a number of items on here that are missing, from my point of view. And it seems to be along the seafront. There are clubs along the seafront that currently have Rother District Council as their landlord, because Rother District Council owns the freehold. They do not appear on here. So therefore, Rother District Council's plan is to upload them to a unitary authority. That goes directly in the flood, in the face of localism. The whole point of the Localism Act was to keep local assets with local people, local authorities to manage them. Not for a unitary authority, which could be way outside of Bexhill, managing local assets in Bexhill. Particularly, local assets that were given to the Rother District Council when they were formed in seventy-four by the Old Borough Council. Now, this is something that the borough councils in Hastings and Eastbourne, either side of us, are not having to pursue. Because they are already borough councils with their assets still securely within their remit. Ours were handed up to a district council, and we are having to try and negotiate to get them back. Now, it's going to take time to do that.
Could I just tell you one thing? Eastbourne and Hastings don't have a town council, so it's likely.
I know that.
Yeah, so they won't have anywhere to have the assets devolved to. They're likely to all go up to the unitary authority, because there won't be anywhere to devolve to.
It does depend how quickly they get their town council to orchestrate it. But, take your point, they could all go up. But ours should be coming down to us, not to the unitary authority remote from this town. The places that concern me along that seafront, the old bathing station, Sobbing Light Cafe, Buckton's Kiosk, Roman Club, Angling Club, Same Club, all Rother District Council property who are the landlord of, and that will be going up to the unitary authority. There is no need for those local businesses and local people to have to deal with a unitary authority so far away. It flies in the face of localism. It really does. And it's high time that we had someone higher authority looking into it. I'll take councillor Hoddage over here, and he's working at the county side of things. And no doubt you're scrutinising the county's move of this. I do hope you're scrutinising the district council's process of this. Because this will, if we all sat back, this will hand Bexhill over to a unitary authority.
Yep.
And we, as a town council, could, if we did nothing, be left with nothing.
So can I again remind you what I said at the start of this discussion? We're staying calm about this.
I'm staying calm.
Okay. You know, you were at the meeting. It is very clear that if there is income created from an asset of Rother, it will go to a unitary authority.
I was at the meeting. The members of the public, listening to this and watching this, weren't at that meeting.
I look so.
So we are now discussing it. I am in the open, so the public can now know that anything that Rother deemed to be making income, they will pass up to the unitary authority. Is that what you're saying?
So that is the indication that we've been given. We've been given a very clear steer that if it is making money, it will go to a unitary authority. You are aware of that, councillor Plim.
I was.
Yeah.
But the public weren't.
No. So that we can ask, and it will clog up the whole system of expressions of interest. I'm only one of eighteen. I am just chairing this meeting in accordance with what I'm trying to make clear to everybody. We will not receive everything that makes money, because the instigation of a mayor or authority is about saving money and putting more money into the pot to make the whole of our area more and create more revenue to come into the South East. That is a principle. The town council is here, and we can receive some of these assets and services, should we wish to choose to take them. It's been indicated the ones that are possible, not even guaranteed, but possible. We can ask for others. But I will sit here tonight and guarantee you, if we apply for every single asset that Rother have on their statute books, we probably will not get any of them. And if the fifty residents that look at this video, that is the fact, and that is where we are. We've all been told that.
Sorry, objection there. You can't make that assumption.
What are you objecting under?
About the fifty residents.
That's the average of people that watch the video.
Well, I don't, I disagree with that. You can't make that assumption.
Your point is noted. councillor Burn.
Thank you, Chair. I must take issue with councillor Plim on his use of the word deemed. It's as if, you're speaking as if Rother councillors are deciding that this is revenue earning, and therefore it's got to go up. It's not their decision at all. It's very specific. If it is currently revenue earning, it has to go up. There's no, there's no, it's not Rother District Council making any decision there. They're being told this is how it has to happen. Now, I agree with you that that really isn't a very good way of devolving anything, and how it, how it how it brings decision-making closer to the people, I have no idea. But please, don't give the public the impression that it's Rother District Council and their officers who are interpreting it in some way. They're not. They're being told what they have to do. You were at the meeting as well.
I was.
Right, so it's not they deeming it to be revenue earning. It either is or isn't, matter of fact. And if it is revenue earning, it has to go up. Now, if you want to create a pressure group to reverse that decision, then I don't know quite where you start, but I'd be all for it. And if there is a mass move throughout the country, objecting to this particular element of local government reorganisation, then, then great. That point does me making. But again, I've got to emphasise, it's not Rother's interpretation. It's Westminster's decision of how it has to be done. So let's get off Rother's back.
In reply to that, Chair, it is very much Rother District Council's interpretation.
No, it isn't.
Because Wildon are doing virtually the opposite.
Through the chair, not across tables.
Oh, sorry, Chair. I did, I did say, in reply, Chair, Wildon are doing virtually the opposite, and they are weighing up the social impact. And that is what this Rother District Council should be doing, weighing up the social impact and getting the public on board with it. By doing what they're doing, they will alienate the people of Bexhill.
So just to clarify, Wildon is very different.
It is.
Do you know why? Because I do, because I lived in Wildon when this happened. They devolved their services twenty-one years ago.
They did.
So that's why they don't have the same issues of balancing a budget that Rother and all the other borough and district councils have. They were ahead of the game. So you can't compare Rother with Wildon. It's a different kettle of fish. Just to make that clear. I've written down some names, so drop your hands and I'll come down to the order I've written. councillor Winter was next in the hand raising.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo and second what councillor Plim has said. If it's all about, you know, what goes, what makes money goes up, and what must come down doesn't make money, it's funny how the delaware is on this list. I think in the meeting, closed behind doors with Rother, it was one that we said, I think there's eighty-odd assets on this list or something, and out of all of them, we went through each line individually. And we all agreed from the town council, although it has to come back to full council, of course, that the delaware was the only one that we would agree not to take on.
Yeah.
So I've highlighted that there. So whatever the motion is, probably in the next three hours when we get to it, I'd like to take that off. I just find it funny how anything that makes money has to go up, anything that doesn't make money's got to come down. And I have to agree with councillor Plim. It does fly in the face of the Localism Act, you know. And I have to pick up on councillor Burn's point that it's Westminster and it's not Rother. Okay, let's just look at what's happened at the Colonnade. Thank you.
Okay, again, let's keep to the facts of this rather than bring anything else in. The next one was councillor Sain.
I would like to just say and remind everyone that what they have given us here, they have said that we can still express an interest on what you're saying, like, what councillor Plim's pointed out. And as I said, there will be a few things that we can add on that. But what they're saying is, there was three hundred items. I think it's down to about eighty items at the moment. And don't come back with, you know, two hundred items, because it's just not possible to do. So councillor Plim's pointed out, I think, five or six items. There may be some other councils that pick up a few things. So if we can go back to them with this, with just, you know, maybe five or six items on there, I'm sure that we can express that interest in it. So it doesn't really need to have as much discussion, because we can just add, what councillor Plim says, we just add it on to our expression of interest. Just because it's not on this list, it doesn't mean that we can't express it. So I think it would save a lot of discussion by saying, you know, let's put the categories in order, let's see what we want to put in, let's see if there's any others that we want to add on there. And also remember that after the devolution happens and it does go up, it doesn't mean it will stay up. It may come back down as well. I know we don't want that to happen, but as councillor Burn said, is, some of it isn't Rother, and they're being told what to do. And we have to go by trust, and we're now letting the public know that that is what Rother's telling us. So if they're wrong, then we're not at fault. We are asking for what we want. As a town council, we're fighting for what we think that we should have. And if Rother are lying to us, then it's public, it's open, and we can blame them, but there's not, you know.
Okay, sorry, Chair. Nobody insinuated that Rother was lying. It's their interpretation and their policy that they've made. So I'm still going down my list of people who have their hands up before. Councillor Jacklin was next. Two more, then I'll ask others to raise their hand up.
So I think I'm correct in saying that councillor Sain said that the Rother would like us to prioritise these.
Yes, correct.
So I propose that should be our goal at this meeting, and personally, I would put toilets first. I think then what we've got is there are some strikeouts and additions. I don't believe that a meeting like this is the best means of doing that. I think it would help to discuss some examples, and I concur that the delaware is probably not within our means, and neither is Bexhill Cemetery. But we may be better to go away and submit our additions and deletions, and then review them either in an EGM or at the next meeting, which I believe is probably Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, which is two days before Friday, the twenty-sixth.
I admire your maths there, Nigel, so quickly. Trying to put a sense of humour on it. Regrettably, that will be too late, because of the process of expressions of interest that then go into the disposal panel at Rother. So tonight is the night that we make the decisions of the prioritising from category one to six, and delete lines we don't want, and add anything else in that we choose to. Just to be clear. The next on my list is councillor Blaygrove, and was up next.
Thank you. Somebody noted just now that not everything is on this list. For instance, the
Somebody noted just now that not everything is on this list, for instance, the town hall isn't on this list and the other things that were mentioned, the moneymakers, obviously we're not allowed those anyway. Um, but the town hall is not a moneymaker, I just wondered why the town hall isn't on this list. That's the first thing. And secondly, the people of this town are relying on us to do the best we possibly can. And we've been given these lists, for people that don't know, of assets. And, you know, it's been said, you know, can you let us know which ones you're interested in? And as you can hear, if it's anything that makes money, we're not allowed that, we're not going to be allowed that and it's simple. So this big old list is going to shrink down in a minute to a lot of things that are not much good to man nor beast, I'm afraid. And to me, it's a bit of a game, you know, we're going to have to go through, through the motions. Um, and I'm not hopeful that we're going to be able to retain anything that's worth anything. Thank you.
The final name on my, my list, so it down was councillor Hunt.
Yeah, I was just going to echo really, uh, what councillor Hussain was saying. We've got to remember what we're actually here now to do, it's here to now prioritise, it's not here to keep going round and round and round and round in circles about what we want on the list, what we don't want on the list. We can add stuff, we can take stuff off. We all know that anything that is of value, the chances are we're not going to get it. So let's move on from that. At the end of the day, we can keep discussing it and keep talking about it and talking about it. At the end of the day, sometimes you're just flogging a dead horse. So we need to prioritise what's on this list, as councillors, prioritise what's on this list at the moment and then move forward from there. Because otherwise we just keep going round and round and round in circles and we'll never get anybody.
The names on my list are now complete, so anybody else want to, who hasn't, councillor Peter.
Yeah, I just, um, before you prioritise, I just want to clarify a case, why are more memorials not on the list? Is that because we've already expressed an interest or not?
I think that's already agreed for us.
It is agreed.
Yeah. Coming down this side, councillor Byrne.
Um, if it is possible for us to add to the list, I'd like to support councillor Plim's list of the seafront assets. Because, you know, my, my attempt at clarifying the situation was exactly at that, to clarify the situation. But I, I share his, his view that Bexhill assets should stay with Bexhill and things like the saving club, the rowing club, the angling club, we, we should keep all of those. And, and we should do everything we can, I think, I was rather maybe questioning whether bogging, bogging down Rother officers in a lot of extra paperwork was the most effective way of us going about trying to tackle that general devolution problem.
Okay, councillor Ross.
Um, just a few things, I mean, we'll cut the list down, but it was pointed out at the meeting that we own the allotments anyway and they've still got them all down here. Um, also with the way they've categorised, some things are slightly odd, um. I noticed under parks and gardens, it, it doesn't include Ed- Ed- and Park, which is a, a community thing. The buildings are also listed separately. Um, so there's a little bit of mixing around here. So you've got to be careful, if you just go by category, you may not be getting everything you think you are in that category.
We did say that at the meeting, didn't we? Yeah. Sort of somewhere like Edgerton Park, it should be Edgerton Park as a whole, everything that's within those two.
But here, the park isn't even under parks or something.
No, merely to get.
So I think that's quite straightforward, we can easily change the category and, and still prioritise, because you're absolutely right, Edgerton Park shouldn't be a community, it should be in parks and gardens. Councillor Carroll.
Thank you Chair, I, I'd, I'd, I'd agree with a lot of comments, especially councillor Hunt's there, we do have to move on. Um, councillor Blagrove there, totally agree, these things that we're getting don't make money. But is that handled properly and correctly by a, a council that actually cares for Bexhill? I, I think we can, we can turn these into big positives for the town. It's not about making money, it's about making it right. And a lot of these places have been neglected for years that I'm looking at these lists. And over the way, um, council, we, we can make Bexhill a lot better. You see, this, I think it's about this, and it was a lot better than it was two years ago, that list. So I, I think the, the thing is, like councillor Hunt said, let's get the priority down in numbers, how we do that would be down to another vote, I suppose, and then we move on.
Councillor Hunt.
Yeah, just again on what councillor Carroll was just saying there, let's be clear, at the end of the day, we're here to serve the public. It's not necessarily about us taking on a asset that is going to make money. It's about what's right for the town, the toilets are right for the town, the open spaces are right for the town, the sports facilities are right for the town. It's not necessarily about us taking on a service that is going to make money.
Okay, councillor Cotty was next.
Thank you Chair, it's also another thing for the public is that we're spending the public's money, so we really also need to make the public have to, we have to be accountable for the public, how much we spend, because obviously in, two years ago, the public toilets, all of them, was going to come up to nearly half a million pounds to get back up to standard. So basically, we're going to have to pay out a lot of money to get, what, if you say the public conveniences back up to standard. But also we've got to make sure that it's been spent by properly and the public are happy for it because there's a lot of things out.
That, that's for this, for council tonight to decide, we want to do that. I accept what you're saying, but look at what we've done with Edinburgh Square toilets, that's what residents are expecting.
Someone that pays council tax.
Yeah.
And everyone that, around the town that does. If you're saying that my council tax is going to go up by five pounds next year, but I am actually seeing a benefit from that, i.e. my toilets are open, my open spaces are nice, clean, tidy, got no problem paying that extra five pounds. And I think that would be the general view of anyone in the town.
Within reason, we will be measured on what we do, not what we spend.
Exactly.
And what we're starting to do now, we're being measured on that, within reason. A banned deep hole community charge tax in Bexhill is still considerably cheaper than a lot of other areas. So we still have a little bit of bandwidth to play with and people will still be paying less than other parts of Rother. So that's not saying, let's go and spend millions of pounds on things because we've got a structure in place through the finance to prudently use the money as best as we can through reserves and decision-making at full council. And the next on my list was councillor Hussain, then I've got a few more names written down. And then I think we nearly are in the position to start saying, let's prioritise the categories, otherwise we will be here till midnight. And that's not acceptable. Did you want to say anything else?
All I was going to say was, could we just find out what people don't want on there and get a start on it, rather than going around the room, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Except if I was with the hands up, are you happy to move on and go through it or anyone want to say anything?
I just, I mean, both, I agree with both councillor Hunt said about things, um, that's the running cost of them.
Yeah.
Um, what we've got to also bear in mind when we get it, because it's not down here, is the cost that RDC are going to put on us purchasing them.
Yeah, but definitely.
We're not purchasing them.
We're not purchasing them.
Well. If, if they're just going to devolve to us, but I think there was going to be a cost put against, a value put against them. From what I understood at the meeting.
This, this list says freehold and it's possible for us to take the freehold, it says.
If it's meaning we can just be given the freehold.
If not, then we'll have to call an EGM.
Arguments over toilets for nothing.
If, if that isn't the case, then that will necessitate an EGM that changes, but that's what it says here and that's what we're dealing with. So are we happy to start going through the detail?
If, or any. Just make one point, on the basis that we categorised all the toilets under one category, toilets.
Yeah.
Are we then just going forward and saying, another category, yes, we're okay with all of them apart from ABC, we go forward?
We choose the order of preference from one to six, one being the ones we absolutely want to start that process on. Two will be the next ones and the next ones, because they'll start the process, Rother, and they'll give us all the information, we'll then go yes, then it will go to the panel.
So it's the category process, category.
Yes.
We go to one, two, three and categories, right, okay, yeah.
And when we do that, we'll then talk about ones that are on this list that we don't want and then we'll talk about if we do want to add any to it. Are we ready for that part of the process? Councillor Jacklin's.
When, when you explain how you're going to do this, can you clarify? If we are merely being asked to prioritise which they get back to us about first, it doesn't matter how important they are, um, so perhaps we need a common understanding of which we want back first. And if it's the easiest ones, maybe that's what it is.
I, I see where you're coming from, I'm not sure I can answer it. We've just been asked to categorise the, the order that we wish for these to progress.
Yeah, I think that's really.
Some will be easier.
An administrative request, says that they've got an order in which to feed them back to us.
Yeah.
I can give a rough answer.
Okay.
Briefly, um, in what we were sort of told was things like bits of land. It, it's, again, it's up to us, but what they were told was like bits of land and leave them till last basically, if you want to. Try and prioritise the more important things like your Edgerton Park, things like that, and then leave like, as I said. So yes, the bits of land is probably easier, but we don't want to prioritise their maintenance. We can look after them, even if they're ours or not ours, we can probably, so yeah, that's probably your answer that you're letting go, I guess.
So are we ready? Councillor Blagrove, are you ready to go through this process?
I, I'd just like to add just before we do that, that, you know, nobody knows more than RDC of what things make money and what things don't. And I just think it would be much better and much quicker, because I'm keen for this not to go round and round in a big circle over and over again. Um, maybe we should ask what we can't have and then that list will be quite small and we could, we could choose.
Just to be clear, anything that's not on this list would be defined as not possible, because this is a list that is possible.
So what's happening to the town hall?
It's not on this list.
Where's that going?
It's not on this list.
Where, where is it going then?
It will go to unitary, because it is of value. We can express an interest, we've said that already, it's not on this list as being possible. Therefore, the remaining assets that aren't on this list are being defined by Rother as not possible, meaning if we just take this list and nothing else, everything else in the town will go to the unitary authority because there is nowhere else for it to go to.
So is everything on here possible?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why it says possible in the comment.
Devolution.
I'm just checking.
Possible.
Yeah, I'm just checking.
Just, just to clarify the situation, councillor Blagrove, there was nobody in this room that could answer for what Rother district council want to do. And so we don't know what they want to do to the town hall.
All, all we know is, as I've said already, this is a list that's been provided that is possible for us to express an interest in. When we express an interest, they will give us a pack for the associated costs and everything else to it. We may well then choose not to take that asset. That will be for us to decide that. Everything in the town that's not on here is out of scope for the possible devolution to town council.
Oh, we take off the allotments, we've got them, haven't we?
Hang on, we, we're not, we haven't agreed that we're going to go through the category from one to six decision. So we need to prioritise, then we'll look at that particular area, what we want to remove and potentially anything else to be added into that category.
Excuse me Chair.
Councillor Sane.
Could I suggest that, um, going back to various comments, that the categories should be the things that affect the residents most.
Yeah.
So you've got community, open spaces, parks, sport, and then the historical, you know. That would be in order, things that affect the community.
Okay. It, it's, it's a really difficult decision to.
It is.
Whatever preferences.
You have to start somewhere.
We do.
There is a target.
Yeah, some of them are, yeah, you're right.
I'm not sure it matters that much because they've all got to be processed. It's just the order that we have preferences to receive them, so councillor Hunt.
Uh, can I just, um, try and move this on a little bit and give you my prioritised one to six of the areas that I would like? I sort of prioritise.
Can we confirm how we're actually going to do this? Because at the moment, we're just saying we're doing it. Are we going to vote for our priority, like if we say community and that gets more votes, does that go number one? Or, you know, are we going to be here for a long, long time if we don't get a process for it?
Well.
And I propose that we just put everything in as its community, historical, open spaces and the votes, the voting system between everything, the top votes will get number one, two, three. And I think that's the only logical way and the only way we'll be out of here sometime this week.
So we're going to do a strikeout thing because we will be here till midnight, we're going to do that.
To try and say we have got no process to this, we're talking about it.
If we each nominate two, our top two things, um, for the town hall, after a count.
Right, may, maybe the answer is, if I shout out community, all those in favour of that being number one.
You are through to judge houses.
No, no, just so you can't get a top six.
Yeah, how, how many times would you vote?
And you won't be able to judge your voice.
It's all work. Wards.
As in men. Why don't we just keep it as it is on the list, community, historical, open spaces?
If I can help Chair, councillor Hunt had the suggestion, here go through his priorities, we, if we all agree, we can get moving.
Okay. What are your priorities? Because you were the first to get.
Priority number one would be the toilets.
All right. So then we go, do we all agree priority number one?
Do we agree with toilets being priority number one?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see where this, let's see where this goes.
No, well, I mean, in a way, toilets, we're almost going to get anybody to give you that lot. Um, I, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing what processing RDC are going to do to have to prioritise in chunks that are difficult to design.
Yeah. Um, so what they've done is they've given us these categories.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Yeah, and then we're just going to tell them that number one is a priority to start.
But what are they processing?
They're processing devolution.
So if we go, if we turn around and say toilets is our top priority, we then go to them and say toilets are our top priority, they come back and say, yeah, that's great, no problems, we go through the processes, handed to us. We then will start taking control of those toilets. Rather than six months down the line, seven months down the line, we're still not in control of the toilets.
Interesting what they're going to, when we do this, what they're going to come back with, which we can then say, no, okay, we don't want that.
No, no, there isn't, we're taking the whole lot. So whatever's in that category.
We have that possibility of taking it.
It's a possibility, but we still have the option to not take it.
We do, yeah, we do have the, the option to say no if it is.
What, what decides that option, what the process is going to come out?
That's why they're coming back to our prices.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then we then decide again whether we want it, but this is just for now, if we want to put an expression of interest in.
Excuse me Chair, if, if I could just, category number one, if we all went, yes, toilets first one, that goes through. Does anyone disagree with any of those toilets going forward? No, good, that goes forward. Category number two.
I've got parks, recreation and gardens.
Is there anywhere on parks, does everyone agree that's category two, they will go yes?
My category two.
Does anyone agree something should be taken off of category two, then we discuss it, so we work it as we gather on. And we get moving.
Our second parks is two.
Yeah, we've got to go to one first, yeah. Some way we're going to go through this.
Thank you. Trying to order it, it's, it's really difficult. Let's go back to where we were with toilets, does anyone object to toilets being the number one priority?
No.
And councillor Sain has already said to add in the other toilets within Bexhill, which are not on the list that we could ask for.
Yeah.
Should we be asking to those?
Yes.
Great.
Sure, Sydney's on that.
It is, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, I think that's a general, all those in favour of that as a principle applying for all of the toilets under the expression of interest, including those that aren't on the list, please show, all those against. Right, that's carried. We've got, we've got the first category. The second category.
I have gone with parks, recreation and gardens.
Does anyone else have any other options for the second category? Speak now or we will talk about that line of data.
I would have looked at sports maybe second, but I, I'm not, with the great, yeah, I'm not wedded to that.
Thinking of residents, how many would use sports versus parks and gardens?
Just point out that under that category is pension, recreation ground and we're in the process of renovating that. And so it's in our interest to have that speeded along.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Me personally, I think park recreation ground is more inclusive.
All those in favour of having parks, recreations and gardens as a second, please show. All those who don't agree with that.
Should include Egerton Park.
We've got that, and it's to move Egerton Park, which is-
Community.
In community at the moment, into parks, recreations and gardens.
Yep, got that.
Okay? Are we all happy with that line of data?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, if it is possible to move Egerton. I can't imagine the problem. So, okay. All happy with that?
Yes.
Good. Category three.
Under that, I'll be going to ask them to put all the buildings in Egerton Park back into Egerton Park as one entity.
Yes.
It's all inclusive, so we said at the meeting, they broke it down, Egerton Park and the buildings, and then we said encapsulate it all in one as Egerton Park.
Just to be very open and transparent, there's some pluses and minuses within Egerton Park, and it's likely to be possible by adding up the cost versus the income, and they're taking it as one. So that will include everything within Egerton Park, is my understanding of it.
Yes.
Parks and gardens, all happy?
Yes.
This is the future of Bexhill. So I would suggest that councillor Hunt's doing so well, we'll ask for his third category.
Sports.
Okay. Does anyone have any of the other categories in advance of sport?
Community.
Yes, community. Can I just say why I went with sports rather than community? Just looking at what's on the list of community, obviously, we've already, the allotments are all the yards. All of the other bits and pieces, in my opinion, that are on there is the buildings of the Pole Grove, buildings of Little Common Recreation Ground, site at St Jude's, Little Common Car Park, the allotments are going. The only thing that's on that sort of like community list, there's only three or four things that are on that list that are actually community based. Everything else is, it's a building or it's a... So that's why that's just everything, that's why I-
To be fair, I was going to say community, but you've sold it to me.
I think that's structured as open spaces, though.
councillor Winter.
Well, I put community as third, only because Bexhill Cemetery falls under community, and I think the majority of Bexhill residents would want to see the town council or the cemetery stay local. And I think most people have a vested interest in the cemetery rather than a sports pavilion.
Yeah. Okay.
Close to the most.
Maybe there's a possibility that if we have sports fourth, then we could, because it's neither here nor there.
Could we move things from category into a different category?
I like sports, so.
Well, now we're going to come to that, we've got half the councillor won, community, and half the councillor won.
Don't everybody want sport?
Right, no. We're down to two for category three, sports and community. All those who would prefer sports, please show your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All those who prefer community, one, two, three, four. So sports is third. So does that make community fourth, unfortunately? So yeah, but I'm just writing that down, otherwise I should forget what one's fourth. So sports. Are we happy with all of those items that are under the category sports?
I can't see what Pole Grove under, they've got Pole Grove pubs.
It's under both. It's under both, it's sports and community. Because you can't have, you can't have the-
Yeah, but I mean, in the list.
Yeah, it's on both. Well, basically, yeah, you've got the, where is it coming? You've got Little Common Sports Pavilion, Recreation Ground, Bexhill, and then you've got Buildings at the Little Common Recreation Ground.
That's what they're saying. Because they're talking about pitches as well.
Again, like, it should be an entity.
Just reminding through the chair, I know I was reading, but there's four or five talking at the same time. So there is some anomalies, and that word, where sports does have things that are in community. So there are buildings from the Pole Grove that should be under, if they're defining the Pole Grove as sports. So I think we should ask to move the items of sports grounds from community into sports.
It's the same as the Little Common ones, well.
I think if we give our financial officer the remit to discuss with our DC about bundling together, that will make things move along swiftly.
Yes. That's what I was literally thinking, is that if we do Egerton Park, Pole Grove as separate, EOI's completely as a whole standalone thing, which is what was discussed.
Exactly.
And then keep the other ones within.
Number four, if we're going to community, did we get number four as community? Are we going to say excluding Delaware?
No, we haven't voted on number four, but we'll leave that to the deputy clerk and RFO to have those discussions. But I think it's very clear where we're going with this. So are we happy with the sport stuff?
Yes.
The fourth category that's been suggested is community. Is everybody happy with?
Excluding the Delaware.
Excluding the Delaware.
I think we should be looking at open spaces. I think we're running out of open spaces in this town. And I think we're building and building, and I think that's left that anyone can get their fingers on, their building. I think open spaces in a time of little wellbeing, recreational usage, we need these open spaces more than ever, because we're losing them quickly. I've lived here all my life, and it's less than half now. I mean, we're lucky, we've got three football pitches now, where we used to have that long
So we've got a decision between community and open spaces. councillor Winter.
I just really, 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 and I want to make it publicly clear, that I object to the Bexhill Cemetery being moved down and down and down and down the list. I think it's almost discussed it, but it's keep going down. I think people in this town have a strong vested interest in Bexhill Cemetery, and it could be classed as community, gardens, open spaces, it's all of them, really.
Hang on. I accept what you're saying. The vast majority of people will have somebody or will go to, or at some point will be attached or visiting the cemetery. I completely get that. Maybe we should then park that, and discuss that at the end as to where that fits, because it's a standalone, it is a one-off, it doesn't fit in a category as such. And I suspect they put it in the category because it doesn't fit anywhere else. So I don't want to lose sight of that, that's wrong to lose sight of it, because it's really important, because we haven't decided whether we really want to be responsible for a cemetery. So let's remove that for now, not putting it further down the line, but afterwards, decide where it fits.
Thank you, Chair.
Are you happy with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. So we're down to two, unless councillor Byrne's going to swagger with a third.
No, no, I was just going to remark upon cemeteries. We're in danger here of assuming that anything that goes up to a unitary will be badly administered, or won't be for the benefit of Bexhill. I think the administration of a cemetery, if the unitary decided to appoint a cemetery's officer to do all the cemetery's, and a general across the county policy, I don't think that would necessarily be a bad thing. So let's not automatically assume that anything goes up is going to be badly administered, or administered in such a way that the residents wouldn't like it. And a cemetery is so specific in what it does, I'm not too sure that the administration needs to be particularly local.
Okay, we're back down to community and open spaces. Unless anyone's going to put a third one in? Right? All those in favour of toilet council?
Suggestion on that. Having, again, looking at open spaces, a lot of, again, a lot of the open spaces land at Ashkin Drive, open space at the Biarritz, small little pockets of land going on in use.
Very small.
The only one that I see, or a couple that I see on there that aren't, is Bexhill Falls, or Promenade and Gardens. I think that should be moved into open spaces, that community, or parks and recreation. Because I think it's, it's not just an open space, it's-
Did councillor Heseyne say that Rother wanted open spaces put last?
They didn't say, they said that would be up to you, just because obviously they can still be looked after, and it would be the more difficult things to pass down, basically, would be at the top. But again, they didn't, when I say they said that, obviously, that's still our decision, so.
I can concur what councillor Heseyne was saying at the meeting. They, because of the small parts of land that a lot of these open spaces are on, each one has got a land registry, each one will have to be registered and transferred over, and so it will take a lot of time to get those bits of land over. So it's not beyond the realms of possibility that they turn around to us and say, okay, maintain them while we're going through this process, but they suggested leave it towards the end, because it will bog us down with a lot of adminis-
And when you look at it, you're absolutely right, some are only like four foot square, and it's going to cost you 2,000 in solicitors fees to transfer it from one to another, because it's land registry. So do we still want to do community versus open spaces, or does that change people's opinion on open spaces? Though, all those in favour of community being fourth, all those in favour of open spaces, community's fourth. Right then, come on councillor Hunt.
Number five, open spaces.
Okay. I'd like to put a counter proposal for five, historical.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, having one, what I've just said, actually, in regards to the small pockets of land, I'd like to bring it in.
Does anyone object to historical being fifth?
No.
Okay. Not forgetting our dear cemetery. Yeah. So we've added the toilets that aren't on the list. We've got to now decide about the cemetery, where that fits. And then what other things we want to realistically do an expression of interest in. So let's talk about the cemetery first. First off, do we want to take the cemetery as a town council?
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favour that we want to take the cemetery as a town council, please show. Any against? I'm going to go against as well, but it is carried. Okay? Just to be clear, the reason why I said I'm against it is because I believe there's three members of staff, and that cost of those three members of staff will come to the town council, but that will all come out if we express an interest, and we'll get the pack of the costs associated with it. So we may change our mind later on.
Chair, can I add, this was one thing I had tried to raise with Esau for the meeting that happened at the Cooten Beach, which didn't get talked about, which is in essence where there are things like cemeteries, libraries, or things that require central expertise. So I've done three parent funerals in the past three years. What we care about is how well the cemetery is run, not who runs it.
Yeah, that's what, that was my point.
And for my own peace of mind, I drove up there two weeks ago, and I was quite surprised, it's actually in a pretty good condition up there in comparison to a lot of other cemeteries. And I'd heard that it wasn't, but it's actually much better than I thought it was. councillor Plin first, and I'll move on.
Yeah, I concur with you there, the cemetery is in very good condition, and very well kept compared to other local authorities, is one thing that we've managed to sort of maintain a good dignified sort of surroundings up there. And I believe what we should be doing is keeping it, take control of the cemetery, mainly for the reason that our forefathers that built this town are buried there, and if we don't look after them, what does that tell you of our society now?
We sold it on taking it already.
Yeah. I'm carrying on saying that. I think it should be in parks and gardens, because they will have the equipment and they could be under their remit.
Yeah. Makes logical sense. councillor Blagrove.
I agree that it should be in parks and gardens also, but as somebody that goes to that cemetery four times a week, and I have done for the last 10 years, I know every inch of it, and I can assure you, there is much of it that leaves a lot to be desired. One of the things is that many of the fences are broken down up there, and there are plenty of other things. So if you're just going up there to take a ride round on a nice day, when everyone's put the flowers up, it looks okay, but I know that place very, very well, and I could show you plenty that needs repairing. I just hope whoever takes it over does a much better job than has been done on it right now.
I'm not saying it's perfect, what I'm saying is I was surprised, because I've been to quite a few cemeteries in the last six months, for reasons, and our one here is in a pretty good condition. That's all I'm saying.
It's not like it was, let's just say that.
Okay, but-
You can't really argue with that, I told you how often I go there, I know it very well.
Okay, we're moving on. So is it an agreement that it goes into parks and gardens?
Yes.
All those in favour? Any against? Right. Okay. Now the next piece, we've already-
Can we also move Bexhill Falls or Promenade and Gardens into parks and gardens as well?
That makes sense.
Rather than it being in-
Bexhill Falls or Promenade Gardens from open spaces into parks and gardens, because it does have the word gardens in it. Yeah.
And it needs maintenance.
Yes. Have we got that? Okay. Right. Presumably, there are two others on here, which must be six and seven.
Just the last one is open spaces.
We've done all the historicals.
Sports, community, historical, that's N5. I'm sorry, there's seven categories. Just seven. Six. Open spaces. Oh, apologies.
The first one just says assets.
Okay. So we don't need to vote on open spaces? No, right. Progress. So the next bit. Okay, so, community, are we removing anything from community?
Delaware.
Remove Delaware.
Purely on the basis, if they ask, I think we should clarify in this, it's not that we've got any disrespect for the Delaware Pavilion, it's the fact it will be far better managed at a unity authority, who will have better funding opportunities, and have a portfolio of venues across the South East.
I suspect there'll be varying options, but I don't see one of them being run by the town council. I'm not being disrespectful to anyone around this table in the future, it's too big for us to manage. Really important to our town, but it's too big for us to manage. So that's the only one we're removing, apart from the allotments that are coming out of there, because we've already got them. My deputy is also saying I've missed sports, is there anything there that you want to remove, or?
Please, mate.
Combined? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, a lot of them are going to be difficult, because of Little Common Recreation Ground, half of it is sports, sports buildings there.
I'm quite confident, and I hope everyone else is, that we leave that to our RFO to analyse and put them in the right, in accordance with what we've stood tonight.
Can I just add in sports, Chair? Wouldn't the rolling club, the saving club, etcetera, that we've just talked about, come under sport?
They would do, but it's the old adage that that creates revenue, so currently it's not on this list. So the next conversation that we need to be having in a sensible way is what others we want to have, and which of the six categories they sit in under expressions of interest. And I, I'm not going to labour it, but we've got to be really sensible over this.
I'm only asking the question.
And I would suggest if we go- Um and I would suggest if we go and ask for any more than a few, we're likely to get none. So, where do we go with this? Who's got some suggestions of what else I'm going to start with councillor Winter this time?
Thank you, um I'm just going to play devil's advocate because that's clearly what I'm very good at. Um I'd like to chuck it out there, the town hall and I would put it under historical, no debate.
My learned right hand, it was actually left hand, but.
Can I just say, can we add, can we get the six done? And then if we just say what we want to add and then maybe leave the actual category it's going to, to the RFO, might be easier.
Have we not done the six?
Yeah.
We've done the six.
No, no, what it means is you're just going through what you want to add or take off, so we're historical and open spaces left, aren't we?
I think we've done those.
We call where we are, then move on.
Yeah, I think we're now in the place where.
What's not on the list, what would we like on the list?
What is not possible or not possible isn't here.
Yes. It's the town hall, Chair.
Okay. Okay.
Someone votes or silence?
I I'm. It's a democratic society that we're in, we're a corporate organisation, it will be down to a vote whether we want to express an interest in it.
All those in favour of the town?
Um or not, because I don't know whether people have been behind the scenes at the town hall, but there's some major works that are needed there. Um but it is an asset of value, which is why the decision's been made for it to be not on the possible list.
So should we go to a vote on that?
Anybody want to discuss it first before we go to the vote?
Yeah, if if we were to be starting out, would would we want the town hall where the town hall is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I might say no.
Should we just not go to a vote on the print whether we want to go on the town hall or not first, before we discuss where we want to move it to?
No, because if you have a vote on it, you then can't discuss it because you voted on it.
We don't know any, own any land yet, we want to move it.
Also, does it include the entity of the falling down office box beside it as a thing?
No.
As one piece or, that's not part of the town hall.
Okay. Let's create a list of items that we think we should add to it and then we'll vote on each one of them. So town hall, any other items that is going to be put forward to potentially express an interest? Councillor Plin.
This is a tricky one because I believe that it may, it's the the foresure, but the west side of it. And I don't believe that was included, um but all the buildings that are in it. And bear in mind, what I'm going to mention here, I mentioned before, but they are buildings at the moment, but they're utilised by clubs and um and businesses. So whether you can lump this all together, um because they don't appear anywhere, and that's the old bathing station, the Sovereign Light Cafe, Buckson's Kiosk, the rowing club, the angling club, the sailing club and the fishing club, oh no, fishing club's going to that.
Rowing social club.
Rowing social club.
The the rowing club might be difficult because it's part of a a big building.
It's owned, it's owned by R D C.
The bombet's owned by R D C.
Hang on, hang on, councillor Crossy through the chair, so we have to get control.
All of these items, Chair, are owned by R D C and all of them are run by people within Bexhill and for people in Bexhill, so it only makes sense for the Bexhill Town Council to be the stopgap on those buildings should they become vacant at any time, otherwise they could be developed by a unitary authority that has no interest in our town at all.
Okay, so if I put the buildings from Sovereign Light east.
Foresure Promenade Gardens, East Parade.
Okay. We all know what that means.
East, west.
Never east, shall we? That's in south, that way.
East.
Yes. Any other items, councillor Crossy?
Thank you, Chair, ideally I would like to set that reopening the Buckhurst Road toilet because that is a far affair for schoolkids coming to, but I noticed that the toilet itself is actually on Saint Three's property, which Robin District Council own.
Correct.
Which is a shame that that toilet can't be opened, because that's the only toilet in vacancy near to uh.
Cover schools, yeah.
It's on the list, but it's not possible.
Because it's Saint Three's.
Which is a shame, so. Oh, that's a no. Councillor Jack in.
I wasn't clear whether the colonnade, uh as in seafront shops, is part of the Delaware and if not, whether that should be on the list.
It's not part of the Delaware, they've been declared like.
It it's not managed by the Delaware, it's owned by, well, it's not actually owned, but it's looked after by Rother. So, and that wouldn't include the foresure because that's set back from the foresure. So are you suggesting that we put the colonnade down as a?
I'm suggesting that it merits a vote.
Okay. Councillor.
I think we ought to set the record straight, um we're assuming that the new unitary will have no interest whatsoever in Bexhill. It'll have eight members from Bexhill, twice the number that it did have before.
Yeah.
So I'd hate the the public to think that going to a unitary means that Bexhill becomes a sort of, you know, desolate area that no one's looking after. There's no reason why a bigger authority with a bigger budget can't do a better job in some areas, so they might not, but I I I don't think we should approach this assuming they won't.
It it could be argued we will have eight representatives of Bexhill on a unitary.
Yeah.
Currently, we only have four on each side.
Exactly.
So we could have double the amount at the higher level.
With someone like Brighton.
No, it would be a separate entity, it's a separate unitary authority.
I do completely understand where councillor Burns comes from, at the moment, if you look at higher tiers and where we've been left, that's probably why we're a little worried of what's going to happen in the higher, you know, you may be right.
It was the assumption that it was definitely one way and one way only, they're not going to care. I just thought we ought to re- redress the balance of that, we don't know yet.
No, we don't, but if you look at current situation, the higher tiers are great.
That could be why they're being reorganised.
Unfortunately, Chair, um when you consider the history of Bexhill and you're well aware of this, because we had to fight to develop our own town council. Fifty years ago, we were pushed aside and the other two councils.
Can we focus on what we want added to this list? We've got thirty minutes.
We are, we are, we are, because he was discussing this. And so therefore, I think we're, we're once bitten, twice shy, so we put it that way.
So should we go to a vote on the colonnades, councillor Jack?
So we've got, I want to create the list and then we're doing all in one go. Any other items that people think we should express an interest in? No, okay. So we'll do it in the order that we've talked about. Councillor Crossy.
Thank you, Chair, um can we inquire about the land for the old Bexhill High School?
I think you know the answer to that.
Well, if you don't ask, I know.
You're going to clog up the system and I have said, if it makes money, that's a two million pound asset that's going to be sold on to developers to develop housing. You haven't been at the council meetings, we've said we don't want to get involved in running properties and running companies. So why would we want to express an interest in the part of land that we'll be building? Because it's part of the strategy of building properties. I can add it to the list and we can vote on it. Land by high school. Right, first item, town hall. All those in favour of us expressing an interest in, and I'll call it the town hall site, which I'm assuming is the Amherst Road building and the villas next to the town hall, because it's the one site. Or is it just the town hall you're after?
I I asked that question and councillor Burn said, no, it's just the town hall.
Okay, so you just want to take responsibility of the town hall?
Um I would just like to add to to that, that I believe the Amherst Road, that there will still be a branch of local government, maybe not called Rother, and it will probably most likely be housed in the Amherst Road building.
Or in the town hall.
No, I think in the Amherst Road building.
So is it just the building of the town hall that you're talking about?
Yes.
In in view of the fact that it seems that Rother wasn't going to be using it and that their unity authority wasn't going to be using it. Yes, because we'd hate to think it'd go empty.
We don't know that they won't be using it, they haven't, until it's decided and set up and the um the mirror authority is in place when they make strategic decisions, we won't know.
We should express interest.
Okay, all those in favour of expressing an interest just for the town hall building, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All those against, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, okay, that's carried to an expression of interest in the town hall. The properties, let's call it on the promenade from the Sovereign, I always get the name of it wrong, Sovereign.
Sovereign Light Cafe.
No, no, that's west.
Is it not just all the properties on the, the buildings on the promenade?
Councillor Plin, you were explaining them from where to where?
Well, they sort of stretch, if you want, you can take the Sovereign Light Cafe and Buckson's Kiosk out of it because they're on the west foresure. Um and the remaining, rowing club, angling club, so, and the, uh rowing social club and the sailing club are on the east foresure. So suffice to say, I think.
We're not just trying to express an interest on everything, it's the west.
Yeah. It's like we say.
There's buildings on the promenade.
The buildings on the promenade from east to west.
I believe our RFO would probably get the gist of the conversation.
Are you okay with that? Yeah, okay, right, all those in favour of that, please show your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, all those against. On the grounds of what I said earlier. Right, the colonnade. Um to confirm what is meant by the colonnade, are you talking of the cafe and the shops round to the steps and round to the fountain area?
Yeah.
That's a colonnade. Okay, just have to be clear, because somebody will come round and say something different to that. Are you including the tower above the shops?
That is the colonnade building.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're including above that as well, okay? All those in favour of of taking on responsibility for the colonnade, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, all those against. One, two, three, four, five. All those abstaining. That doesn't work. Because there's only six and five as eleven and there's fourteen here with no abstent, no abstentions.
Oh, it's the colonnade, I thought that.
Okay, so that's still two haven't voted.
Try and do it again.
Do that again, all those in favour of taking the colonnade, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All those against. One, two, three, four, six, okay. Okay, that's carried to add the colonnade as described.
So can I? Can I ask, is that after the work's been done?
Don't know.
When it's planned?
When they're going to do the work.
Voted for an expression of interest, we'll get the pack back, we've explained the process, all the numbers will be within that. It could be, if we choose to take it, that might change that decision, I've no idea, we'll have to deal with that when we get the information back. Um. I've written something else down there.
Land.
Oh yes, okay, the potential building land by Bexhill High School. Um behind the Drew Hall and between the school and the ledger centre. All those in favour of expressing an interest on that piece of land, please show your hand. One. All those against. I think that answers that. Okay. Right. I'm now going back to the agenda and I'm absolutely thrilled and amazed that so many residents have stuck with that process. Thank you very much indeed, it was really arduous and thank you councillors for um your time and effort and putting these out, it's really important. And I think we've got some good decisions moving forward. So, moving on to item twelve of the agenda, which is Rother District Council Liaison. Um we have had a leaders' meeting, it was limited in so much as there was only five or six of us there. I think they're really important and what it did, we haven't printed the report because it's been, we've all been a bit busy, um but verbally, it still opens the doors to conversations and if we get a blockage, which we did have with Pepperton Play Park, which will come on to enable us to have a direct face-to-face conversation with the right person. And it really does help move things on when needed. Um there's nothing, there was one question asked by councillor Crossy, which you will get an answer, but it will be in time, so don't expect it too soon, but you will get an answer. Um there were no other questions asked by councillors here, but that door is always open if there are questions that anybody would like us to ask at those leaders' meeting, um the next one's in September, we're more than happy to help and and answer those.
Do we ask a question now or at the end of the questions?
Um I think I think probably if you send them to the clerk, if you've got questions, because the next meeting I think is the nineteenth of September, which is before our next full council meeting.
So, so we can't at the end and receive questions from that?
You can do, you can do, it's just unconscious of time, we might not get to that. Um so, uh where are we, verbal update on Pepperton Play Park?
So we have two updates on Pepperton Play Park. Um the first one is that we've reached the second stage of applying for our grant funding, um so that's good news. It's quite a lengthy process, but we made it through the first stage, so that's positive. Um and I'm very pleased to let you know that today I received a draft lease for the Pepperton Pay. We all have an extraordinary meeting where we can review the lease.
And that was as an example of the leaders' meeting, we managed to ask some questions, so I'm I'm delighted that that's arrived because it was concerning. So, that's really good news, we don't know when it's going to start, but obviously we're keen, we've got the money, most of it, we want to crack on and get this done. Um so, twelve C, consider booking the Rother District Council Town Hall Chamber for future meetings and we've had the costings, um I think we should consider it, but I think we should consider it just for full council meetings to protect our budget a degree. Um committee meetings are more than comfortable here, but tonight with a significant number of residents and if we had four more councillors here which could have been here, it would have been very uncomfortable. So I would like to add in a word, future for council meetings and then progress from there. Councillor.
Does the thirty five pounds an hour include use of their audio visual equipment?
No, we have to provide our own. We are not, it's not possible to connect in, that's been made abundantly clear.
Yeah.
I have no idea why, but we're not allowed, full stop, so we have to use, which means our um provider.
So we're putting our stuff on top of their stuff?
Potentially, we'll have to test it and see how it works and we'll have to test it before the first meeting. Councillor Wadgro.
Um I would like to say that I have checked the costs on this and to stay here for a year uh for all meetings is um thirteen hundred pounds approximately. Uh to go to the town hall, it is near to three thousand pounds. And I agree that we should probably take full council there and do the rest of the meetings here because it's such a, there's such a big step off of money, I don't think we should do that.
It is within the realms of our budget to be able to do it, but I think we should do a compromise and potentially build up to it if it works for us. So I think we should try it and do full council in that, councillor Plin.
Yeah, I totally agree, we should be going into the town hall, Bexhill Town Council should be there in the chamber and utilise the facilities we're allowed to utilise. Um the um, we had tried to utilise their um sound system. To be honest with you, when you look at the feedback, the the footage from some of the town um chamber, the the chamber meetings, they are not very clear as opposed to our um uh audio visual here. And so we've probably got a better audio visual ourselves to go in there.
Okay, uh I think it's quite clear, there's no real objection, um you've had, you've said already councillor Wadgro, I'm going to.
Can I just add something, it's not, I just would like to add something, I would like to congratulate, congratulate our clerk because what she's done now is advertised these meetings, which has never ever been done. Um it's, she's, she's made a nice advert to say to the public, you know, do come down, as you can see here, if anyone takes that up in big numbers and they do like to come to full council, we won't even get them in this place. So that's why I think going to uh there for full council is a good idea.
With the addition. With the addition of the words full council, future full council meetings in what is on the agenda, um, I'd like to say the vote on that. All those in favour?
Sorry, what's this for? No, I've just been to the toilet, sorry.
Okay, um, it's to consider booking Rother District Council Town Hall Chamber for future full council meetings for the cost of thirty-five pounds an hour. I will, I will add it to the list more, you can't just count two and a half hours times thirty-five, because you've got the cost of setting up and all the ways, so it'll be more than two and a half hours. But if we just do full council, it will, then we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
So all those in favour? All those against? Okay. We have twenty minutes left.
Chair?
It's not. Councillor Pym?
Can I request that you move item thirteen to the next meeting?
Agree?
Yep.
Can I report on one thing from Ralph?
Okay, quickly.
Um, so the parish councils were disappointed by the Cudon Beach Hotel meeting because it essentially replicated what we'd heard before. So we wouldn't have spotted that because I think we were seeing it for the first time.
Okay.
Uh, your notes were excellent. Um, Alison Nolan presented what was likely to happen in the future and they think that we will be asked to establish neighbourhood committees. And so therefore we're now going to have a meeting that will do what the the Cudon Beach ones should have done. Which is essentially what we've been told is what East Sussex and Rother want and are going to do without asking us what we think.
Okay.
And that was the point of the Cudon Beach meeting. So we will now have that, um, hopefully in in September.
Okay, I'm gonna skip item fourteen and fifteen. I'm gonna go on to item sixteen. Are we all there?
Yeah.
It's to consider um, the additional council vehicle. Now unfortunately, I've seen people on social media getting excited about this. Um, it is an error in the original calculation of the project that the operations manager looking after these people will need to be able to get around. And this is the reason for, um, asking this council for, uh, a further vehicle. It is as simple as that. It's an error in the original project that was put to us. Um, it will be within budget this year because the budget that was agreed was, um, to employ town rangers from the first of April for twelve months and they're not starting until September. So we have enough money in the budget for this year and probably next year. But you can't have three people working in potentially different areas of the town without being able to be in contact with, um, the person that they report to. That is the basic logistics behind it. Councillor Goss.
Um, a few points, uh, can I ask what the the vehicle is that you're getting for the rangers? Because that needs to be over seat three and if it's a van, it's all around stone.
That's already been agreed, I can't remember what it is.
Uh, maybe it's a box or the van.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, the, and the other points that I've had down here, I'm I'm sure it's not accepted for three ranges, but, um, where where will these vehicles be parked? We've got two vehicles to be parked somewhere.
We don't actually need to worry about that, because that's operational. We're here to deal with the strategy.
Well, if there's a costly bug, we need to know about it.
There's no natural any costs, otherwise they would come to us.
Okay, there's no costs. Um, I said that the third vehicle, there was also a note went out about it being a car. A van would be much better because then it can, A, take the place of the, uh, other van if uh, it breaks down or it's in the garage, plus it can also be used if they ring up and say, oh, we need another mower here or something, it can be used for things like that.
We have an option of a van, but the van is dearer.
And the fourth thing I was gonna say is, um, some, two of the vehicles were diesels, I would suggest not using a diesel uh, for what's likely to be local running around only about five mile radius of the
Yeah.
hub, because diesels cannot take that, bottom ones have got too much emission equipment and they break down.
Yeah, I agree. So in principle, sorry councillor Wadgrove.
Um, just to say that if anyone hasn't, um, totted up how much these three vans are, the Ford Transit is a total cost of eleven thousand two hundred and seventeen pounds. The Vauxhall Combo is seven thousand eight hundred pounds and the Renault Clio is nine thousand pounds.
Renault Clio nine thousand, a hundred and eighty-four pound times twelve.
Forty-eight.
Time per per year, yes. But you do it per year because your precept is per year.
Yeah, I know.
You wouldn't add up the total cost.
I'm just adding up forty-eight by a hundred and eighty-four pounds a year.
That would be the same before you've got an annual precept.
Is it lease or purchase?
It's a contract.
So it's a lease or purchase. Can we get the VAT back?
We normally are able to claim that.
Yes.
Yeah. So. It is unfortunate, but I don't see that we've got any choice, we have to have people to support the people that we've already agreed to employ. And if we want to do a good job, we will only be measured on the job that we do. And we won't be able to unless the manager has access to these people. Um, as an example, if someone's in the middle of doing a job and they're in Sidley, they've got to stop doing that to get in the van to drive to screw fix and then somebody else, other companies are available, um, somebody else then wants something else got. It could be preferable for the operations manager to go there, pick it up and drop it round and the person carrying it working. You get more bang for your buck.
Hence the van.
Hence the van. So. Councillor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. Does the operation manager actually have a vehicle?
That's, doesn't come into it, he, that wouldn't be relevant.
Why?
It's his, it's his private vehicle.
Okay.
We're employing him to do a job to manage people, so we have to provide the facilities to en- enable him to manage those people. Councillor Jackie.
Um, I'm slightly confused as to whether it's a car or a van, but my preference would be for a vehicle which two people can drive it, can ride around in and you can put stuff in the back and I think that's a small van.
I I I read this, that the option is a car because it is cheaper, because who's designed this is given options. I I tend to think a gran, a a van is preferable, but that's for us to strategically decide whether we want a van or a car and then vote this through or not vote it through.
It depends on equipment as well.
Yeah.
We'll we'll change the insurance of the car to the van.
Yeah.
You, you know, you're gonna have to declare that you'll be putting a lawman in the back of the car at some point, it will change things considerably.
Yeah, and it's business insurance as well. So councillor Wadgrove.
So the three things that we're given there as an option, two of them are are over thirty-six months and one of them is over forty-eight months. So I would like to propose that we take the Vauxhall, Vauxhall Combo Van. Um, because, uh, that is the cheapest option and they, Vauxhall's not good anyway.
Except that's a diesel.
Just saying.
Then you should get the petrol version.
We haven't voted on that.
No.
That, but, no, rather, I would say the, the, the first two have this.
With a five mile range, you'd go electric.
If you've got somebody, if you've got somebody charging.
Hang on, we are running out of time, we've got ten minutes and there's a couple of items I want to get through. So it's a straightforward vote, hands up, who wants a transit, who wants a combo? All those in favour of a transit?
Does anyone know what a difference is between a combo and a transit?
Well. Um, they they should do, because they should be prepared for this meeting to make decisions, but I take your point. Councillor Sam, do you want to assist?
Yeah, so, um, personally, um, I don't think there's any issue with a diesel. Um, and they are under warranty, so.
They they are, but.
You would have a free year warranty, so you wouldn't have to worry about that.
But it's still, when it breaks down, it's got to go in the garage and modern diesels are not good if you do under fifteen to twenty thousand miles a year or if you don't run them down motorways regularly.
Yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise they can't reach you.
Okay, I I personally think you just stick to the diesel, um, but again, that would be up to everyone here, you've got warranty on it. So the transit is the larger one, the combo is your mid-range and then obviously your Clio is your little car. So, um, that's what we're voting on basically.
So. So it's transit or combo unless anybody wants to put it the third as a car. But I'm sensible and reading the room that people don't think cars are appropriate for this job. So, all those in favour of transit, please show your hand. Two. Five, six. All those in favour of the combo, show your hand. Two, three, four, five, six. I don't know how that works because it's, that's twelve and it's fourteen, but that's what I've counted, casting vote. I I I'm gonna be sensible and I'm gonna go for the Vauxhall Combo. I I I tend to agree that diesel can cause trouble because I've had that, but we'll, we'll see. It's three years, if that is not perfected to run, then in three years' time, we've got the diesel. Okay. Where am I going next? We've got the greens who look crazy. The greens who look crazy. Yeah, um, I would just like to ask councillor Winter, twenty A.
If you're gonna ask me to move it again, I'm not gonna be able.
No, I'm not. I want to take that one next because it's already been moved on once.
Very good.
Um, so this is a motion that councillor Winter's put forward.
Sorry.
Yes, I said I'm gonna, yeah, yeah. Um, because councillor Winter's had this, um, deferred once already.
Okay, that's fine.
And it would be unfair to defer it because that would be deferred for three months. So you re, you had the paperwork, resent you again, um, and I think I think it's to do some investigation, isn't it? Is that what you're really asking for?
Yeah, yeah, it's quite self contradictory, you've all had it for a month, if you haven't read it then shame on you, but yeah, it's it's.
It's as simple as asking our clerk to do some investigation. Okay, so can you transfer that into a motion?
Um, that's a clerk. Um, goes off and investigates, um.
Some potential.
Some potential sort of titles and, uh, you know, those sort of, uh, bits and bobs.
Okay. Have you got that, using the word bits and bobs? For the benefit of the, uh, members of the public, we're all getting a little bit tired, but we're still going. Um, I would then like to go, I know I'm going around the place, obey with me, but there's some important things to get through. Um.
We need a vote on that.
All right, all those in favour of our clerk doing some investigative work to see how councillor Winter's motion could work for the benefit of the town council, please show your hands. Any against? That is carried.
Thank you everyone.
Okay. I'm now going to move on to item twenty-one, I'm really nervous about not doing some other things, but we are time dependent. Um. The correspondence that we've received, twenty-one A. Um, it's to do with, for those that aren't on finance or haven't watched the video, we awarded a grant from, towards Action Against Abuse. And they've asked for us to give some words to support their application to a grant for Rother District Council. It is part of Rother District Council's standard process that they have other people to, um, substantiate. Um. We've never been asked for it before, so it's a full council to decide whether we are prepared to do that or not. So it's a simple, um, binary, yes or no, do we want to do that? Councillor Pym.
I would, I would like to propose that we ask the clerk to, uh, write a letter of support and comment.
Do you have a second there? All those in favour? Good, thank you. Um, twenty-one B, um, which is what the lady spoke about earlier on tonight. Um, it's, it's had to go as correspondence for an agenda item because it, it supports people within Bexhill, but the item itself isn't in Bexhill. It's in Hastings and it's within our remit to override that and advertise it because it does benefit people within Bexhill, it's a Bexhill organisation, but there just wasn't anywhere suitable to hold it when it wanted to be happened. So it is literally a yes or no, are we happy to support it, um, by advertising on social media?
Yes.
Is that a proposal, yes and?
Yes.
Are we all going yes? No one against? Okay.
I've got one against.
One against, sorry.
Okay, you're against that?
Yeah, you didn't let me say what I wanted to say.
Well.
I've got time.
It's gonna take me one second, but I'll say it anyway because it's a great cause, but it also sets a precedent now for us to do that.
But the precedent will come through here. Anything outside of Hastings, we will vote upon, so if there's another great cause out of Hastings that impacts Bexhill, we may make the same decision. That will be in our hands to make that decision. Um, so that's done. Um, twenty-one C, um, for background, TGTM are the company that we use for the road closures. And they want to use our feedback to them that they provided on their website. Um, we've never been asked for it before, so it's not something that a clerk would be able to consider automatically. I think it's a good thing because it shows that we're working with our contractors and if they're doing a good job, why wouldn't we say thank you and they're doing a good job? So.
On, so on that basis, I think there's clearly an interest, because I'm chair of the Carnival Committee and we would like to be considered to give feedback to this particular company because they do a sterling job.
So you could do that yourself and they may, may choose to use that information as well. So this is from the town council giving feedback.
Yep.
Um, all those in favour? Anyone against? No, good. Um. Yeah, so we've got five minutes to come up with a plan as to how we support the Normans Bay. Um, we've had some information sent to us, we've had a presentation now for the last two council meetings, it's on the agenda. Um. I, number nineteen is from you councillor Winter, um, so.
Yes.
We we are listening, but we don't know what the solution is to suit everybody.
No, 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 and I'll be very quick. You'll please hear, I've prepared a motion and it is worth it this time without bits and bobs. Um, so we've all heard and all seen what Normans Bay Residents Association and residents have said. So I would like to propose that we ask the town clerk to look into alternative locations within the village, for instance, Slus Lane, work with local residents in the residents association and come back to the council with a report and recommendation in time for our September or October twenty twenty five meeting.
Could I add an amendment to that?
If you'd like to.
And to consider the graffiti removal?
Yes, I'll accept that.
Because I think that would show to the residents that we are listening, we've heard.
Yep.
And we're trying to do something about it. I I haven't got all the answers. The other thing I did think is that there are other areas within the Bexhill boundary that have signs of their own, what they call village. Sidley has Sidley going into Sidley. If Normans Bay wanted to be, keep the identity of Normans Bay, there's nothing to stop Normans Bay having a sign at the beginning and the end of their part of Bexhill.
No, no, quite.
That's for the residents association to.
That's the motion, I'll accept the amendment.
Okay. If you accept the amendment, I'll second that.
Very good.
All those in favour? Good. Okay. Unless anyone's got anything else, how crucial is it for external audit to be brought? Okay, um. I'm afraid I'm going to have to close the meeting at this time because everything else can be picked up later on. And I was always very conscious early on that this was going to be a long wait. So at this point, I'm going to close this full council meeting. Thank you.